How many days out are you for this entry?
Middle of the night, just last night.
Great. Good evening. We will call this meeting to order for USD 348 Board of Education. I would invite everyone to rise to cite the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of the agenda, a couple of amendments to that. One is striking item three under recognition for recognizing Ms. Naughton. We're going to do that next month instead because she is at musical rehearsal, duh. So we're going to do that next month instead. So we'll strike that. And then also, I would ask if it's all right with the board's blessing to just add not a deep dive into sort of opinion or editorializing, but because there was a Chamber of Commerce forum on district property this last weekend, to just give the opportunity as part of the superintendent's report to correct some factual information. People can then do, say, believe whatever they want about that, but I do think it's important for statements, if they are incorrect for whatever reason, that we just give that opportunity to provide on paper hand to God what the actual information is. If the board is comfortable with those two amendments, again, striking item three and then adding fact checking, not in a combative way, just in a very here it is, do what you want with it way, as part of the superintendent's report, if you're comfortable with that, then feel free to add a motion.
I move we approve the agenda as suggested, legally amended.
Andy has moved and Tony has seconded to approve the agenda with the two amendments as suggested. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Organizational items, parent, family, and community engagement opportunities, principles, and/or announcements, anything you would like to come and share, please feel free to do so.
Just a reminder that the junior high will be having parent teacher conferences this week. We still have some spots to sign up for. So parents at home, you can call the front office at the junior high. That's the easiest way to do it. The secretaries can pull up the schedule and fill in for a time slot to meet with any one of the grade levels that your child happens to be in. Again, that will be this Wednesday and Thursday. Wednesday is from four to eight PM and Thursday is from eight, excuse me, twelve to eight. Alright, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bland. Anybody else? All of those things are happening at the high school as well. We will not have another meeting before the BHS musical happens. That's November ninth through eleventh. It is Maple Leaf Weekend coming up. Take care of yourselves. Everyone is doing all the things and there is a thing is that Maple Leaf recovery at the beginning of next week. So we all keep that in mind as we have grace for one another. A couple other things, transportation.
Yes, this is National School Transportation Appreciation Week. And so all of our bus drivers and even our city crossing guards that help our kids get to and from school, this is the week to tell them thank you. On Wednesday is actual school bus driver appreciation day. So thankful to everything they do to help our kids get to and from school. So that's.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, so thank a bus driver and/or crossing guard on Wednesday if you have the opportunity. If anyone doesn't have nothing else, great. We can move on to the consent agenda. Once you have had the opportunity to review, if you've not done so already, we can have a motion to accept minutes, payment of regular bills, payrolls, all the normal stuff that happens.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Andy has moved and Chris has seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Recognition. Okay, we have a few items here. The first one, and it's okay if people can't be here, it's absolutely fine. And that is the case for our first item, which is Savannah Hancock. She is a Baldwin High School student. We really try to recognize when students have achieved their Eagle Scout project because that is just such a higher level of commitment and investment of time. In this case, we wanted to give Savannah an extra recognition and thank you because her project was actually to prepare disaster kits for classrooms at the high school. So not only was it just achieving all those things that are laid out as required for an Eagle Scout project to have the integrity to meet that standard, but it also was in service to the school. So on behalf of USD 348 Board of Education, we wish to promote and recognize excellence in all forms across the district. So today, we recognize Savannah Hancock for her Eagle Scout project. Let's give her a round of applause. Great. For the next one, we are recognizing the BHS band, Mr. O'Neil. Are you here and could come forward? We are not going to do certificates, but I do want to give the opportunity to introduce Mr. O'Neil tonight so that we can talk about why the board would want to again recognize the band. They did some really awesome stuff at the St. Fair.
It was a terrific day. It was a beautiful day. It was like in the mid seventies. And we marched in the parade, wore our uniforms. After the parade portion, we can march into an arena. So there's a secondary performance where we stand and play. The band received straight one ratings for their marching and then they received a one plus rating for the performance. And our drum major, Luke Hayes, did all the directing that day. I just went along and drank freshly squeezed lemonade. That's all I did. So.
If you were a member of band, would you please come up with Mr. O'Neil so that we can get a picture? And then we are also going to give you a round of applause.
And this is actually it. We have a small band this year. It was just the two of us.
Are you the more cowbell guy?
We have our straight lines down.
You've got it. You've got it.
Can't work on the circles yet.
Well, I want to congratulate you on behalf of the Board of Education. Thank you very much for making our band awesome. They also played at the bash. Megan's right there. They've played at games. You guys have just, it is an amazing contribution and your next fall concert is.
Next Wednesday.
So the band has been supporting and promoting other activities and is part of that culture. So now we have an opportunity to go watch the band concert. Again, when was that? Sorry?
Next Wednesday, 25th, seven o'clock.
Alright. Thank you guys for being here tonight.
Get your picture.
Yeah, let's get the.
I'm free of my stuff before I relax.
Jump in.
Yeah, jump in. Alright. The USD 348 Board of Education promotes and recognizes excellence in all forms of school activities. So on this night, we congratulate Baldwin High School Band. Job well done.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to be here. I know it's not like you guys don't have other stuff to do. Alright, next up, I'm going to invite Mr. Mr. Bland forward because we are also recognizing the Baldwin Junior High School's bicycle education program. Mr. Bland, could you expand a bit on what that is, how that is happening and why therefore we as a board would be excited about it?
Well, really, I should be up here talking about Crystal Ingeman, our PE teacher and coach, because she is the one that did a lot of the legwork for this. So it started about, oh, a year and a half ago, we went out for a grant and we ended up purchasing over 20 bicycles with that grant from a local bike shop just down the road from us. And over time, we have done everything from institute a bike safety curriculum to bike maintenance to actually going out and going on some adventures on the bicycles, which has been really great. You know, our students are at that age where they're starting to build some confidence and maybe wanting to explore their boundaries a little bit more. So putting them on a bicycle with understanding that, hey, these are the things you need to do to be safe, that's a really important thing for our youth and our community. So we've had a tremendous time doing it. Coach Ingeman says the kids have actually absolutely had a fantastic time going out on the different group rides that they've been doing. So that's a little bit about the program that we have now.
That's great. Are there any junior high students who have participated in that? Would you come up and take a picture with Mr. Bland or Megan?
You were here for that, didn't you?
While they are doing that, the Live Well Grant that they're talking about, that Derek talked about to secure this, is actually recognizing our junior high program for their efforts to get kids out and be active. And it starts with the recognition through this bike program. So this is a pretty cool thing.
It's taken place.
So I mean, the board, please pass along to Crystal as well that we appreciate, promote, and support excellence in all school activities, including this awesome grant program. So let's give them a round of applause. Alright. Celebrating USD 348 student voices. I have not received any letters from students as anyone else. Okay. And then moving on to our educational program highlight, we'll call up Casey Bossard. Sources of Strength is the name of this program and I see helpers, which is awesome.
Thank you. Good evening, board members and the community. My name is Casey Bossard. I'm the school social worker at the junior high. Today, I've brought some of our Sources of Strength peer leaders with me to help kind of talk more about it. But Sources of Strength is a highly effective and widely respected program. The goal is to seek an improvemental health and wellbeing of our students. It focuses on building resilience, fostering positive relationships, and providing support networks for our young people who might be struggling. The program is based on principles of peer leadership and mentorship. By training our student leaders and our mentors, we can help create a support network within our schools that can reach all of our students, even those who might feel isolated or overwhelmed by every day. I've seen firsthand our peer leaders come to me and reach out to their peers and their fellow students when they are struggling and give them that support network that they might otherwise not have. So it gives them a spark of hope for so many of our teens in our building that are struggling or feel really alone. So the Sources of Strength program has shown to have a significant impact on reducing incidence of self-harm or suicide among young people. By promoting a culture of strength and support, we can create an environment where our students feel valued and supported. And I do have to give a shout out to Sydney and Avatni and the high school team because they really started this and we got to adopt it in our building and really grow it with our students. So even more importantly, I want you guys to hear their voices and all of the excitement that they have. So first up, Charles Baker.
Alright, so being an SOS peer leader means like being able to help people learn their strengths and be able to express it while having fun. That's something that SOS tries to do. When, and then my favorite thing about SOS is School Activity Night, which just happened last Thursday. It was really fun, so.
Maggie Stoltz?
Um, so there's nothing bad that I can say about Sources of Strength. It's amazing. I'm so glad I joined. I feel like being in Sources of Strength kind of makes me feel important and kind important among like other students and my peers and adults and teachers and. I really like the activities that we do. School Activity Night was really fun. I had a good time. And that's it.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Alright, and then Brooklyn Kessler?
Um, so yeah, Sources of Strength was just an amazing thing. I think we added to our school. I think it helps a lot of kids, especially to have something in our school like this with us just being in junior high. Like there's a lot more things in high school that you can do and I think that it's cool that just young students can get to have something in their community that can all help each other. And it's like a choice if you want to join Sources of Strength. And I get to see kids who want to do it every single day and like just show up to our meetings and stuff who actually really care to help other students. And I've had friends come to me and stuff and just different things like that. And I think it is so cool that, you know, different students can come to all different kinds of teachers that are involved in Sources of Strength and all the different students. It's just a really amazing program. And Sources of Strength has helped kids learn and build protective influences. Kids can go there to learn how to help others who struggle with mental health and can get awareness out about the different topics. We talk about like Sources of Strength. Us kids go on many different field trips. We've already had like three this year and I've gotten to go on one of those and it was really amazing. And my favorite thing about Sources of Strength, the connections I make with others, learning about such sensitive topics is just amazing that I get to do something in my school to help others. And I get to learn to spread awareness about this subject and I just think that that is great to get out there. So thank you. Thank you, guys.
So guys, it's really hard for adults to do public speaking and you guys did a really great job. And I hope that you all know that every single person sitting up here thinks that you are important, right? You have to remember that for yourself, but you are important. And so thank you for what you are doing to contribute to your school culture and climate because that's where it starts. That's awesome. Thank you so much. Alright, now moving on to the Baldwin Built Employee of the Month.
Yes. Very excited to share the information for this month's Baldwin Built Employee of the Month. So the October Baldwin Built Employee of the Month is described as the heart of the school. They are an amazing team player who goes above and beyond to help keep the primary center running efficiently. This building would fall apart without them. They are a jack of all trades, willing to do literally anything that needs to be done, a very organized and good multitasker who never complains. They do everything with a smile on their face and they're always so positive and helpful. They take time to make conversations and treat everyone with kindness and respect. They are very patient and understanding about the needs as they often are the one who first contacts, is made contact with the student who enters the office. They have manned the primary center office for two years by themselves. They have taken care of sick kiddos, provided support to teachers and staff, as well as be a welcoming face to parents and community members who come into the building. So essentially, the best way to put it was how this one nomination stood it. Angie is the unsung hero of the primary center. Please join me and congratulate our October Baldwin Built Employee of the Month, Angela Dorsey. Thank you for all you do. It's the work over the primary center again for the last couple of years, doing that work by yourself going solo was something that everyone noticed and recognized. So it did not go unappreciated. So please know that we're excited to have you on our team and how that you have a partner in kind out there. Things are a lot of fun for everybody. So I mean, this time we also have a gift on behalf of the school foundation.
Baldwin Education Foundation is also co-sponsoring this effort. And so congratulations on behalf of all of us.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
There you go. Now you get to put this on display in the front office so everybody can.
Exactly. Every single kindergarten, preschooler, second grader, all of them want to touch it.
We'll polish it before returning.
There you go. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Alright, moving on to, well, we have public comment. It is open until seven. We can go ahead and do, anyone who has signed up now. There we go. Do we have anybody signed up? Okay. And the topic, sorry, I don't have the piece of paper, but you can just tell me.
I'm not sure.
Okay. Got it. Public comment is an opportunity for the board to listen in accordance to district policy BCBI. This is the agenda time during the meeting when an individual may address the board. The board will. There comes up to ten patrons to speak. Each of the patrons will have the opportunity to speak for three minutes. Those wishing to make public comment are asked to sign up prior to seven PM with the exception of not discussing specific matters related to identifying students or staff by name due to confidentiality considerations. There are no restrictions regarding the subject matter the patron wishes to share with the board. The rest of it's not really relevant at this point in time because we only have one. So without further ado, board members are not to respond during this time. Again, this is the time established in the meeting for the board members to prioritize listening to the public.
I didn't pre-script this, so we have to keep tabs on time for me. I did send the board a couple graphs through email about half an hour ago just to, so it's easier for you to follow along. Basically, running for school boards gave me a chance to dig into some data, just kind of interesting stuff I've come across specifically related to academic achievement. I figured, hey, why not compare ourselves against the most, I'd say, highly desirable school district, at least according to parents in the area. So here we go. It's interesting. So I looked at assessment scores from the state in math, ELA in science, and from the 22, 2022, 2023 school year for self-paying lunch students at the high school level. And I'll start on the right and say, actually Baldwin does very well in this category of science. Only about six, or excuse me, about seven percent lower than the comparison. But once you start moving to ELA, we have a significant drop in performance and it's even worse once we get to math. And so a lot of times you hear a lot of reasons, oh, we can't compare ourselves to these other schools because of funding and everything else is different. But my question is, my hope is for the board to spark some curiosity on your part and, you know, something to look into is how can we be doing so well in science compared to one of these, you know, top district in the state, but yet we do so poorly in ELA and math at the same time. It's just an inconsistency I saw and kind of makes me say, okay, what, you know, there's a reason for something, but you know, it's hard to explain away so easily. And secondly, I did want to point out the finance comparison. So this is also for 2022, 2023 year per pupil expenditures. If you look at instruction, there's a difference of a whole $35 per pupil that indifference with us down by just a little bit. And then total overall expenditures are compared, you know, comparison is, they are 9.2% higher in per pupil expenditure. So just something to think about and, you know, be really worth looking into. I personally don't think that just, you know, dollars into the budget really necessarily helps academic performance. I mean, we see we're doing awesome in science and I think that's, that's great. I'm, you know, excited for the students, but I feel like we're maybe shortchanging them on their potential a bit by maybe with the poor performance that we see in math. So, thank you.
If you said it and I missed it, I apologize. What district did you say you compared it to?
Oh, Blue Valley.
I didn't receive that either.
I don't have. Or did I?
I sent it about 6:30, so I don't know if.
Let me reload and check in. I've seen it. I've seen it, but I'm not.
Okay.
I'm not, just so you know, I'm not seeing it. So you might try again so that the rest of the board can see it. I saw it online, but not everybody looks online. So, yeah. Thank you. Alright. It's 6:53. So if anybody signs up between now and seven, we'll certainly honor that and circle back. But in the meantime, Megan, nobody else has signed up? Okay. Just want to make sure. Alright, we'll go ahead and move on to financial report. Again, if someone comes within the next seven minutes and signs up, we'll certainly honor that opportunity for public comment. Financial report, the truck bid is up first.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey.
So attached to what you'll find in your packets was a few quotes that we received from Green Bush Cooperative, personally quotes, which were, again, also included what we did, kind of comparison to the two vehicles last month. We did a local bid as well, just for local vendors as part of the state contract. Those bids for the local bid did come out on Friday. Unfortunately, again, we did not have any bids submitted. We did have one vendor that we responded, but unfortunately, I didn't have the vehicles on the lot at that time. So for our first quote, again, the Green Bush Cooperative, let me step back. Our original specifications were for a 23, 24 Ford F-250 with a snow plow prep package, an option to add a snow blade and salt spreader. This is part of the reason that we're looking to add a truck to our fleet to add another vehicle for snow removal and salting of parking lots and etc. Phil Long Ford quoted a vehicle that was on the lot, which was a 23 Ford F-350 with a snow prep package along with a plow and spreader. That also included shipping for a total of $75,826. For the truck only, if we decided to purchase separately, the plow and spreader was $57,950. Malloy Chevrolet had brought in two different quotes. Excuse me. Well, they were two separate, but they were the same vehicle. One was with a snow plow and spreader and one was with NOCT, which again was a 24, or super duty F-250 XL, again with a snow prep package, shipping, plow and spreader, for a total of $62,833. And the truck only is $49,919. With the Malloy we would have to order, it was a lead time about six to eight months. And so again, that's why we looked at the state bid contract, looking to see if we could find something as of right now. I did follow up with both those vendors on the 13th, just by happenstance if they had something that hit the lot. Phil Long did not have any change or any other vehicles available. I heard back from Malloy this morning. They did have a vehicle that was a 23 Chevy Silverado 2500, four by four, it had a cab, 48301, however, did not have the snow prep package, which our understanding with visiting with Mike and other vendors that this is something that's done when they build a vehicle.
There is some that will add to those, but they're aftermarket. So it's not really advisable to do that because it's an extra alternator. It's extra work on the transmission just because you're pushing a lot of weight, so on and so forth. Even though that was the cheapest truck that we got quoted, we were really excited about that, but unfortunately, just with that, we didn't want to move forward with that particular vehicle. So our motion this evening is to move to reject all quotes at this time. We factored that just because of what was available, partially is because we just didn't want to spend so much with the Phil Long, even though it was on the lot. It was a little bit bigger truck and just more expensive. The vehicle could be a need in the district. I mean, yes, we would love to have one, but it's not a major need at this time. So we want, we would like more time just to do some research and find that the best package that fits our needs for the cheapest that we can. So, so that's what we're seeking tonight on that. So I don't know if there's any questions or.
Oh, sorry. I'll ask a question. So we do have the capability with what we have now to.
Yes, we do. You know, I visited with Mike about that. And again, that was part of our reasoning. Yes, it would be nice. It was more of kind of a want than a need, at least at this time, but it'd be something that we would like to add to the district fleet over the upcoming, maybe six months to a year, depending on. Obviously, winter, we don't know how much snow we're going to get, but this allows us to have another driver in the district early in the mornings to prepare for school. prepare for school.
Is this truck also what was necessary to replace Ryan's vehicle?
That is true. Yes, we do have a Suburban.
Ryan is utilizing a Suburban, if you recall, last year that was totaled out. And so it's, we've got it, it's in operation, but it's an aged vehicle. So it's, it's functional for now, but the need for a truck is coming there. It was built in two or three-year capital outlay plan, and dollars were earmarked for it. But in talking with Nate and Mike, based on the fact that it was a six to eight-month lead time to order, are we really gaining anything at this point?
And I was informed with the, I think it's the U A G, the strikes for the auto, that the Ford F- Super Duty plant's been closed, at least temporarily, so that can even push it back more.
So this could be a situation where we approve the purchase and wait a year, year and a half to get a bid.
So that's kind of why we want to do our due diligence, if, you know, and possibly just do it locally if we can. We'll just have to keep trying.
Any other questions?
I'm moving to reject all. Second.
All those in favor of rejecting all submitted bids, please say aye and raise your right hand. Aye. Motion carries seven zero. We'll move on to the chairlift bid. Well, let's finish financial report, and then we can come back to that. We can just, we don't have to go up and down. We can come back. No, that's okay. Thank you.
If you recall, we had presented to the board, I believe about two months ago, bids that we received.
For the junior high chairlift. So we, Mike, at that time, recommended that we reject all bids and go back to the table to see if we can get, we only had one bid at that time. See, just give us some more opportunities. So we rebid it again. That bid ended on October 13th. We did receive one bid. It was the same bidder or vendor as the last time, which was A E L Inc., which is Access Elevator and Lifts. Excuse me, my notes here, which basically is just an inclined lift that turns 180 degrees, goes down, turns again, so on and so forth. They do, their quote was for $62,455. This includes just the material, which would be the lift itself. The district will be responsible for adjusting some of the stadium-like seating and some electrical. Our budget for this was $68,000. Again, so the $62,455, so we're under budget there, which leaves us some room for some electrical work there, and mainly the seats are going to be internal labor. So we're working with Mike to try to get, he's got a plan, but there's a couple of different options as far as how can we retain as many seats as possible. So our recommended motion today is to approve the purchase with A E L and begin the process.
One of the things we talked about was maybe like an injured player down on the court.
Correct.
But probably can't lay flat, so somebody's got some kind of injury other than maybe like I sprained my ankle or something, can you still do anything with that?
Yeah, my understanding is kind of just like a regular, yeah, like a chairlift.
My understanding is similar to what we have in P A C.
Yes, yes.
By the stage.
So if somebody was on a backboard or something, they wouldn't lift them up?
Probably not. Probably still walking up the stairs.
Other questions? Discussion?
I know this was in a base upon the fail. And I guess I just question, I asked this question so I know the answer, and that is right now we currently do not have any students that have a current need for this or a family member that we're aware of that is keeping anyone from accessing that. And I guess my two cents are is that I just feel like we have some other safety and security issues in the district that I feel would be a priority to this at this time. Specifically, I know we've had a couple incidents where in the high school parking lot where the cameras are not a quality enough to make out what really happened, which, so I guess my personal opinion would be at this time, I think this is a need in our district, and we need to find a way to get it in there, especially if it needs to be prioritized when we have a need with a student or family member that's going to, you know, eliminate them from participating and they're pleased to get down there. To Phil's point, if it's not a safety issue for an athlete, you know, then we're going to be hauling him out on the backboard up the stairs anyway. So my two cents are is I support doing this at some point, but I have a hard time prioritizing it right now with some of the other needs that I feel like would be, I had a little with this kind of a dollar expenditure. So my two cents.
Kelly's point, did they give you any idea on the timeframe of how long it takes for them to put it in?
Lead time on, I believe, was six to eight weeks. We're looking at summer time.
Okay, so next summer.
Next summer.
I'm sorry if you said this. Do we have any issue with being ADA compliant, or is that something that we need?
That not having that there does not have us in compliance. However, based on the age of the building and the cost to install, historically, it was a reason why it hasn't been done. So the answer is we do have students within the district that will be there within a couple of years that could benefit from it. I would say the rationale in terms of why we put it on the capital outlay plan like we did was based on if the dollar figure itself, it would fit within the opportunity, you and I've talked about this, being able to pay it out right now versus putting it into a situation where we'd be paying on it for three years with interest on. That was our rationale for it. I hear what you're saying, and I understand, and I'm not going to say that the security needs with the cameras and a few other things that we're already looking at are also on my priority list, and we do have capital outlay plans to address those things as well. But I hear with the updating of cameras, that is an expense that.
Well, this wasn't, I mentioned during the budgeting process that I noticed that was on there and knew that we'd probably get to this point. And I guess I reiterate, I support doing it. I just don't know that it's, from, through my lens, I don't know that it's in the right order of some of the needs that we have.
Other discussion?
I consider it accessibility, and so it's kind of hard to, in my mind, to rationalize them in the same category, I guess. I mean, I know they are in capital outlay, but accessibility versus, you know, retroactive finding out what, something that happened. I mean, all kids have that, and I think there are adults who would use that as an accessibility issue potentially. Could be grandparents, could be someone who has oxygen, you know, issues potentially to get down there, but I think it's a both and.
Tony, Andy, Chris, what do you guys think?
I mean, I agree with Susan, it's always bothered me that we have a beautiful gender, some students can access and we have communities who can't get down there as well. So this is a very costly endeavor to get at that access area for everybody, but it does, to Megan's point earlier, these are just.
Better plan.
Anybody else?
I'm finding it hard to reach and inform to sit without, like, how much would this money buy us towards these other endeavors? I don't, I don't, we don't have that data.
Comparison data. I know Kay is working on securing, I'm going to put her on the spot here. Kay? I'm going to put you on the spot. I apologize. You can flatten my tires later. I'll get, I'll get right home.
You'll see on the cameras.
Camera, camera-wise. Well, yeah, we'll find a place where the cameras aren't there. Camera-wise, what could we access camera-wise, or what could we do with the $68,000 camera-wise?
That would be a lot of cameras. A whole lot of cameras, yes. Somewhere between $3,000 to $5,000, $6,000, you could get a camera, something outside of the building. It kind of varies. Like, at that time, I was really solid with 2500, and it doesn't work anymore. But, but, yeah, it would be some new camera server, it would be a whole lot of cameras, yeah.
That would give you better review. Because I've not seen the videos, but I know there've been a couple of events here recently where you couldn't identify exactly what had happened.
I am not aware of the specifics of what you're talking about, and so I'm not sure which camera or what view we're talking about. There are some, we have some plans for at least one additional camera on one parking lot thing I'm aware of, but I don't know what parking lot or what view we're discussing. So there are, what is more expensive are cameras in places like the ball fields where we're going to have to have some way, you know, be using some system, some, you know, telephone wifi or something to make those work. If there is a spot in the parking lot like that, that could be more expensive. I don't have the background to really answer your question specifically about the incident you're talking about or what part, what parking lot we're talking about.
Need to put fun for a month to get more comparative data. You have to send out the bids.
Yeah, yeah. We have a third requirement.
Is this bid, I don't remember what their last bid was.
It's exactly.
It's the exact same.
Can I ask another question? Security related, I know this was discussed last year, but at one point in time, we were having junior high students walking around with a plow in the building because they could not convene to that alleyway, and I think there was a temporary fix, Mr. Blaine, if I recall.
First, some things I'd rather not discuss on camera than on video, but I will say that they aren't going around at this moment.
We've got that, that operational fix in place.
And we can get into some of those questions to a degree. There is an executive session that allows for detailed security plans, but not something for safety reasons that you get too far into the weeds in an open session, but can at least come as a part of a subset of the safety and security update unless there are specific questions related to the chairlift bid itself that intersect. Okay. So I think what I'm hearing is that there's a desire to get more information, which means we would have to, if that's the case, there would be a motion to reject the bid. It seems like that's where some folks are. You know, I enjoy playing devil's advocate for its own sake. One of the reasons why we attempted to capture this project in the bond was because of deferred maintenance. So there is a part of me that says, hey, we've budgeted for it, it's reflected in our budget as a budgetary item. We can certainly, you know, and it's, it's a good point, maybe we do want to reroute all of that in a different way. It's identified, and I'm certainly not personally closed off to that idea, but it was a part of that entire assessment process of what the needs are and what we need to do, and it does cost a lot of money, but costs less money than some of the other things we saw. And so it is an opportunity to achieve an objective that has been identified in terms of creating more accessible spaces. It's always, you know, it is absolutely a fact that we don't have a current situation right now, but we could have a situation with a student who moves in two weeks from now. And so I would ask that we give that some thought, too. It's always easier to kick the can, and I also understand it's, we're in a stressful environment, but there were reasons why this was reflected as part of our process, and so we might want to give that piece of it thought, too.
I asked a question about kicking down a month, but I'm, I think the accessibility issue is important, and I'd be fine going for this tonight as well.
Well, I think, I think there are really good points for, for and against not, you know, perhaps rejecting, going back to drawing board a little bit with how the resources are directed. So I certainly hear that. No one here is anti-chairlift, so that isn't the issue for sure, and we want to make that clear. It may just be a difference of opinion about appropriate timing, and that's okay. And so someone can make a motion, and the chips fall where they may, and we'll know. But we certainly don't want to represent that no one here is against putting a chairlift in.
In whichever way you go with either approving this or that we begin the discussion, reallocate towards cameras, it's filling the need for our buildings and for kids. So it's, I don't know that there's a bad decision, if that makes sense. One thing is, is I want to make sure, though, that we get a lift in there, and I want to do it in a way that's prepared for the use of it versus reaction.
Would delaying this keep you from doing it in summer? I mean, if we voted on it this month, would it still be available to be delivered in time that we need the same timeframe that you're hoping to do with today?
Yeah, possibly, depending on when we made notification. The reason we chose summer is just because the kids are out of the building. We talked about winter, winter break, spring break, but again, we didn't want to be on a tight timeframe. So to answer your question, yes, we could probably do that.
And is there a potential that we could do both?
Well, depends on, you know, with the future decision of the vehicle, the truck, that we're already delayed on choosing if this is the right time for that. And so we've got, I think we've got some room out there to be able to do both that by the second semester.
Yeah.
That would be the perfect.
We do have many allocated for cameras this year. I haven't done that bid, and every year it is a little bit of a juggling match. I took, you know, I talk to stakeholders, we, you know, I look at the money we have available, and we've kind of been adding cameras based on a, we'll be talking about this soon, but based on a plan from a few years ago that was kind of how monster security helped us develop. But certainly, if there is a specific need, that's always brought out to me, because I will always talk to administrators and the resource officer.
Yeah, I would say Jake and I.
And Mr. St. Gary's day on us, and they will bring forward to me needs that have developed through the year. So if there is a new need that I'm not aware of, I can look at that before next month.
How much did we have budgeted for the truck?
We have, right now, just over $60,000 as it sits currently.
And we can, if we're holding on to the truck, we can reallocate that money to the cameras if we do both.
I'm going to make a motion. Nobody's feelings are hurt if it doesn't go, I mean, it just, it gives us a place to go. I move to accept the chairlift as presented.
My second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Raise your right hand.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries six one. And so, but I think what I'm hearing among all is that if we've been making, even though I understand it's not ideal with a truck bid, is often the case at this table, there's no clear, perfect answer and clear wrong answer. It's a graduated series of steps of what we do with the resources we have. So I think what you guys are clearly hearing is that we would like to see what that looks like with the, with about the same amount of money and how to move that a little bit lower priority and front-load more into that area. I think that, is that, board members, you feel like that's a correct? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Coming back to, sorry, Kay, we got to pause for a minute. I know it's a perfect segue, but we are going to circle back to public comment because we had one more come in before seven. And that is for Mike Kennedy, and the topic of public comment is numbers.
It's serious, I know. First, I want to say that I've been tracking the Agad News, and I want to praise Ms. Hoskinson and the students for the variety activities they've been doing. I think it's really great for our community, and I am personally really excited to see the things to come as this program continues to develop. Next, we've all taken interest in numbers, various sorts, over the past month, and perhaps there are times where the administration or myself have made an error in presenting some numbers in the discussion. One was last month during the budget discussion, the board provided a sheet stating the projected cash reserves in the account at this year-end as being 2.5 million if we adopted the lower mill rate. At the time, I believed the 2.5 million projected reserves to be incorrect as the board discussion ensued, but I couldn't see clarification. Perhaps there's a misunderstanding in accounting for the heavy bond payment already made, whereas the bulk of the tax revenue is yet to come this year. But according to the current budget-at-a-glance document, with 12.488 mils, we would have approximately 4.15 million at fiscal year-end. So could the board please look into evaluating the discrepancy, as I believe it's important for the new board in January to have accurate numbers? On June 30th next year, we'll be at 2.5 million or we'll be at 4.1, 2.5 or 4.15 million. Also, at the 9/18 meeting, I made a statement about salaries increasing 6%. I also obtained this information from the published budget-at-a-glance document provided in the packet through the year-to-year salary information published. With these numbers, the calculations yield 6%. The board president, in a Facebook comment to a post critiquing me, stated a quote for those for whom facts still matter, the raise. those for whom facts still matter, the raise was 5.2% and not 6%, end quote, and stated her information was also in the packet provided. So perhaps we're looking at different numbers or calculating things differently. Certainly, I wasn't attempting to distort any facts here. So again, perhaps next time, we maybe have a conversation before taking it to Facebook. Finally, in the public forum on Saturday, I want to acknowledge a mistake I made in preparing numbers with respect to my bond and interest comments. I misstated debt obligations were 1.5 million and collections from levies in the state were 2.5 million over the past three years. I inverted some terms here, and I misstated a few things. But I think my point about growing the bond and interest reserves through tax levies is still relevant and troubling to me and to other taxpayers. So accountability to correct my misstatements is important to me. And so with that, let me clarify that the debt payments over the past three years have been 2.5 million, not 1.5 million. And according to the budget at a glance documents, over collections and levies, especially in '22, '23, increased reserves from 3.75 to 4.1 million by the end of '23. In '23, '24, the initial plan, tax plan would have increased our collections above obligations again, leading to a reserve increase to 4.4 million. But thankfully, in response to taxpayers, the board here scaled back their levy portions here, and I, I and others thank you for that. And our reserve projects to be slightly, increased only slightly, to 4.15 million. 4.15 still seems like an overabundant excess to what we need to have reserves to fund in a case of a crisis, and I still think the board should consider using a portion to accelerate our debt paydown. Thank you.
That was like the most perfectly timed. Technology update, safety and security. Now, Kay, we can go.
Oh, we do have a problem. If you know me very long, I think that I could tell you that a lot of times I say about tech, that it's working best when no one notices it. Tech is kind of ubiquitous, and if somebody notices, it's probably not working well. And I've kind of felt the same way about safety and security, kind of the undercover guy, you know, the Secret Service guy in the dark glasses or gal. But I think there is some need to have a, I'm going to switch over to having Megan.
You just thought it was out of it. I really did.
Yeah, but you really did. I think there is some need to have some amount of transparency and some amount of reassurance by talking about it. So, safety and security has a whole lot of cogs. Do I need to disconnect, Megan, so you can connect?
Yeah, it says it's currently in use.
Okay, sorry. Sorry for the technology issues.
It makes me feel so much better.
Yeah.
Just thinking to myself.
Oh, this actually may do the trick. Try this one more time. Perfect. So, this is where I wanted to be, because this is the one slide I need to see my speaker notes on. I wanted to say that the heart of safety and security is in the people. So our administrators, teachers, resource officers, support staff, local emergency response personnel, emotional support staff, and all the plans and preparations that make, that's the heart of safety and security. No two scenarios is going to be the same. No amount of technology can address every situation. So it's really in the people. In addition, there are pivotal pieces of safety and security practice and preparation that happen with every department in our district. So I'm not going to talk about passageways, adherence to fire codes, bus evacuation drills, emergency lighting, CPR and AED training, FEMA shelters, critical injury response, how to prevent foodborne illness, what to do if a student has TB, outdoor lighting, or suicide awareness. But I will say that there are a whole lot of people in this district working to keep students safe and secure, and there are a lot of needs, as we just talked about, both filled and unfilled. But this presentation is about tech's piece of the pie. So by the numbers, we have about 99 views from security cameras in the district. We have 23 controlled entrances, 61 access control devices, because we have a few things that aren't exactly an entrance that are controlled, and sometimes one door takes quite a few devices. We have purchased, and because Mike Elliott is on vacation this week, I didn't bother him with a timeline, but we have purchased 70-door propped alarms that will be installed this year.
I can tell you one of them's over at the high school, and just ask your high schooler about those that eat outside because it goes off.
Yes. It does work, and you can hear it from the second floor. I've been over there. But as far as wide-scale installing, I'm not quite sure where that is. And we have 198 phones, and we'll talk in a minute about why that's important. So, security cameras. We do have a plan for a kind of a combination of upgrades and adds. So we have quite a few cameras. Our oldest ones were at the high school. All of the analog cameras at the high school, our very oldest cameras, have been replaced. I still have one of the, almost as old as an analog camera, that's running and only runs about half the time. I have additional views besides that one. But for the most part, those are all gone. So our next oldest and in need of replacement are at the primary center and the performing arts center. So we have started replacing some of those as needed. Those are still functioning quite a bit of the time. Once in a while, they just completely go out, but they're just not the quality that we would see in cameras we buy now. So annually, as we get ready to do that, as we just talked about a little bit, you know, I go over that with stakeholders, and it's an ever-changing, safety and security is every year is an ever-changing thing. I think over the last two years, I've done maybe six different plans to get ready for invitation to bid because, for some reason or another, something like the door propped alarms became more important. And so that money is there. I can always spend really as much money as you ever gave me. I could spend that money on safety and security. But it's a juggling act, and we, there's been a constant investment in upgrading and adding, and we haven't went backward at all. So a lot of the plan that we have, it was based on a review that we did with Homeland Security a few years ago, and so there were like levels of cameras that were needed in places, and we're, we've been working our way down those levels. So that's a piece of it. That's a piece of what's in, you know, the administrators' plans. Those, the view stations you see in each building were added also after that review. They are there not only for those places to be able to view cameras, but they're mostly there as a deterrent, or partly there as a deterrent. We have, I can't go back on this one very far because I haven't been involved just for the last couple of years, but both last year and this year, we did get matching funding from KSE Safe and Secure School Grant. And so we will, we'll use that this year on, part of that this year on cameras, and did use part of that last year on cameras. We did cut a chunk out of the budget last year with BOTA, but we did still have, we still didn't match everything the KSE gave us over all the things we spent for safety and security. So access control, that's basically all the doors and electronic locks in the district. Our very first bit of access control came in, I, well, there was a little bit before, but our server and the most locks were when the primary center was. The primary center already had a secure entrance, so that's where you, there's a, there's a secure space where someone enters the building, they're allowed into the office, and then they can't leave the office without being buzzed out. And that's just basically to keep people from getting into the building. You can get into the office from inside the building, you just can't get out of the office. So the primary center already had a setup like that. We, the previous boards funded redesign, construction redesign of three buildings, as well as quite a few additional locks at that time, and that added the secure entrance at the other three buildings. Now, following that, once you lock buildings down like that, a lot of the locks we've added since then are functional because people still need to get into the building, and your building's locked during the day. So we keep adding more locks, you know, just to make things a little more functional and for security reasons. Obviously, it attracts everybody going in and out because they're scanning in and out for the most part. And we're, you know, transitioning in certain places, completely away from people having a key, and we can disable the cards, you know, without a problem. So if you recall from last year, when I got ready to bid for some additional access control, we are having to switch, completely switch to a new system because the system, the company that we had before has dropped support of our system. So it's getting harder and harder to get pieces and parts for it. So we have, we bid for the first parts of the new system last year. They have installed the server. I don't have any actually doors up. All this stuff takes a long time to get in. But we have a server for that. We can do that transition slowly or quickly, so it just can, depends on how much money I want to put towards that. Both systems are functioning. We'll have, as we develop this, we'll have two up and going. We'll add new doors to the new system. We'll have the old system going. My kind of plan is try to sort of do a building per year, but I'm also looking at applying for a COPSS grant this year, which has a spring deadline. That's a federal grant, and I'm hoping to get enough money to kind of speed up that process. Because in the big picture, it's something we have to do because we need to get everything over to a new system. But it's also replacing things that are already there. So it's money I don't like to spend, but it is money we're going to have to spend eventually. So I will be looking, the, the federal grant has a nice match, so hopefully we can get that worked out. Also, under access control, originally, we thought we were going to integrate the door propped alarms with the access control, so I did a lot of the lead work on that before I handed it over to Mike. Somewhere along the line, we were, actually, we were looking at schematics to see how to do the batteries, and we decided, well, maybe, maybe the district could install these. So we ended, they didn't end up being attached to our access control. Again, the door propped alarms and the access control we've purchased the last couple of years were, we did use the KSD Safety and Security Grant for those. The other piece that tech gets involved in are communications. So guardian communications, this is not a new thing. I think probably for the last maybe 20 years, we've had some sort of system that would email or call a lot of people. And so partly, that's used for routine general communications, but in every instance, the overriding need for that, or the overriding reason we would have that, is for those emergency alert communications. We have an emergency list that would get called if there was a daytime sort of emergency. I think maybe it's been used once that I remember. I think that's wonderful that we don't use the emergency alert list, but having that quick access to get emergency alert communications out is just a pivotal piece of having that communication. We did switch this past summer to another company, cut the cost in about half. It also had a nice aspect of adding unlimited users. So our previous system was a very few, a very small number of administrators that could use the system. And now it's pretty much available, as we roll it out, to teachers, most staff members, coaches. Our goal is to work towards unified communications for parents, so there's one, there's a one-stop spot to look for communications. So another part of that communication are intercoms. Our primary center has an actual digital newer system. The intercoms at the other three buildings are old. Some of them are very old. We last, a couple years, a couple summers ago, we worked and created a digital bridge to those. And so that allows us, one, to replace things that break down with new digital components, yet still talk to the old intercom. And it also allow, gives us a way to connect to that overhead intercom system with things like our phones. It allows us to, you know, right now, we're using the phone system, and we have it set up in places with some lockdowns and other alerts. It allows phones access to that intercom system. It allows, because our phone system, we can set up soft phones, we can talk to the intercom with a cellphone if we want to. Do we still need to upgrade the intercoms? Yeah, eventually. But right now, we definitely have an avenue to reach them. And that also sets us up when we start looking at future tools, like the wearable security devices we looked at last year. We have a way the now that we can use those old systems with new tools. The other thing that will be, I hope, new this year are some handheld radios. This again was part of our, this year's, just this year's KSD Safety and Security Grant. And part of the condition of that grant was that we had to integrate or with emergency personnel BAMs. So I'm coordinating with Douglas County Emergency Management. We will be the first district, if I get this all set up, to be coordinated with Douglas County Emergency Management so that we can switch over to a BAM that emergency personnel can also be on. So to do that, we're looking at some digital radios that will hook in with a statewide system. So there's towers all over the state that are used by city, county, state, and federal agencies that are also available to school districts. They have some BAMs set aside for school districts. So we will be working towards communicating with those.
I would give Kay a lot of credit for her thorough research on this. This has been coming up on about nine months worth of looking at different radio options to make sure that we're getting the most flexible, wide-range, solid communication for our administrators there.
I also say I knew absolutely nothing about radios when I started this process. We did spend, we did spend quite a bit of time. I looked at some, they were kind of a cellphone type, maybe you remember me communicating about that, that I was kind of excited about, the way they worked. In the end, they required, you know, a pretty decent maintenance fee to keep them up every year, you know, that we would have had to continue plans for every radio we had. With these radios, they'll be an upfront purchase that again, we'll, we'll have some matching funds for, and then no one is charging us anything from there on in, at least at this point. We don't have to pay for the BAM, we don't have to pay the state for the BAMs, we're not paying Douglas County Emergency Management for their health. There'll be no continuing expense that I'm aware of, or even with our, the type of radios, the VHF radios, yeah, that we have with the buses, even they have, you know, there's some licensing fees that continue with those. I would like to look down the line, moving our bus radios over to the, you know, the more modern system as well, but that'll be a bit down the line because what they have is working fine. We are actually just tomorrow looking at GPSs on the buses, though. That's, I guess, a bit of safety and security as well. We're starting to explore that. So the last piece that I have to talk about, if I'm talking about tech and security, is cybersecurity. I once heard an FBI presenter once said that no matter how much you try to educate people about cybersecurity, they're still going to click the link. So just try to keep them, keep it from getting to them. But I do believe, despite that, that a lot of cybersecurity is around awareness and education. A lot of that education is for me. I've went to more things and attended more things and actually joined a group to learn more about cybersecurity because it's not a place, again, kind of, I've been learning more about it than radios, but it's not something we all thought about a few years ago. So we are trying to get that education push on out to our staff as well. We've done quite a few things in the last couple of years towards risk prevention, and there will be more things that we will add. You know, we've added some, our tech staff, multi-factor. You know, we've added some, our tech staff, multi-factors authenticate all day long. Our, the rest of our staff does once in a while. We've changed some things about password management and access to our networks. We changed the way a little bit about data management, we've moved some of our more critical servers offsite, where there are engineers hired to, you know, pretty much watch them day and night, and do all the right updates, and be watching for all the bad things. So then, the final piece of that is that network security piece. The main way you get network security is to keep everything up to date. So we will be, I will be looking at bidding for switches this year. I, it's a very preliminary estimate of around $80,000, because I haven't had a chance to check into it, but, and I'm planning on about a 60% E-Rate match for that. Our current switches were purchased, once again, when the performing arts center and the primary center were built, there was a tech bond that went along with that, so we have a lot of things in the district that happened in 2009-ish, 2010-ish. We'll be looking at, our Wi-Fi is newer than that, it is still in need of an upgrade, and we'll be looking at that the following year. I believe Internet gets bid again this year. What we're doing cybersecurity-wise there, as we are, the service we currently have is primarily protected from Lawrence ON. That means when it hits Lawrence, it can go east or west. And so typically, our service runs in through Kansas City. It's been wonderful with the current provider we have, that hasn't been the case in past providers, because as soon as that cable gets cut in Kansas City, all we have is a few milliseconds of switch over, and we're going west instead of east. We get updates from probably two or three a month, sometimes more. People are cutting cable a lot in Kansas City, trying to see if they can find some copper. So we have been fortunate to have the provider we have right now, and I'm hoping our, our next E-Rate bid lets us continue with something that, we will definitely be bidding for something protective again. And we do also maintain a backup service. So, safety, security, it's kind of a, we've talked about this even before this, this started, it's kind of a balancing act, you know, where, where do you put the money? Every school day, we put together large groups of children, young adults, staff, in one location, and they can be a target. Target of natural disaster, acts of violence, bullying, illness. We want to protect them from each and everything, and every type of harm. So I just want to take this time to thank you, to thank past boards for the thought and the time and the support we've had for safety and security in this district. And I will take general questions at this time. We talked about this a little bit earlier in the meeting, there are some things that when we're broadcasting out to the world, that we don't want to expose some of our vulnerabilities, those are fine things to talk about. Love to talk to each of you individually, or each of you in an executive type of session, but, but I would love to have general questions at this time.
I'm scared now.
It's scary stuff to think about, it really is. So we, it's one of the reasons maybe I don't talk about it sometimes, or don't want to talk about it sometimes, but I think there's some reassurance in knowing that somebody's thinking about it.
Last email you sent, not the last one, but the one before, in the one play report, giving us, was over, in excess of 50,000 emails, do you remember? Don't bore my mind. One question I had about the transition that you talked about earlier, we were talking about, I think it was access, the access controls, that you had an idea to upgrade and that that would be done not all at once. In order to achieve that, so you have, how many people in your department? Not everybody knows this.
We have two, maybe .25-ish.
Right.
Including myself.
Exactly. So I think the transitional, it's not so much a question, it is sort of a question. It's an observation that that seems like a good plan based on the realities of the staffing that you have, to do that in a transitional way and not in an all, all at once way. Is part of that reasoning and managing up expenses way, I just want to encourage you to continue to communicate those needs, because if it's better from a safety and security spot, to sometimes do those switches all at once, for people who don't live in that tech world every day, and you have to, you know, like me, to draw a very clear picture, that would be helpful information moving forward.
Mostly from my standpoint, I, I look at, okay, I have X amount of money, how am I gonna spend it this year? And so that's why I look at maybe doing a building per year. Is it completely time-critical? No, not really, because, other than the fact that it takes really long time to get anything in, if we have a particular door go down somewhere, we can put it on the new system. Some of the pieces and parts of the old doors are reusable, like the thing where you scan your card, we can, we can use that little box still. So parts of it will be reusable, the just overriding thing is to get it, get everything, so we're not maintaining, putting cards into two systems and maintaining two systems, and eventually, when it becomes more critical, is when that server, and it's about there, can no longer get updates, and then there's some security risks there. So is it critical this year? No, but I might be turning around next, next year, saying, yeah, we need to do the rest of it all at once. So getting it all done at once today is, is just taking care of it sooner and making it a little cleaner, but we can definitely run two systems for a while.
Thank you for the work you do with technology and for what you do to keep our staff and students safe.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And for you, Kimla.
Yes.
Yeah. We'll go ahead and call a recess. When we come back, we'll start up with old business. Okay? All right. All right. Let's move it.[1053.58]
All right. We'll go ahead and call the meeting back to order. At this time, we will start back in again with old business. And that is before we do, there was a golf update. Our new golf girls golf team is doing very well at state. So that's exciting. That Andy just saw that online. So that's awesome. We're sending our best. Okay, old business enrollment of non-resident students.
Yes, so one of the things that passed last legislative session was new legislation requirements regarding out of district students. Baldin City has accepted out of district students for many years. We've done so with our practice pending that there was space in the classroom or in the grade level. And that's just something we've done. Well, now it's legislated. And now it's legislated with a specific policy that has to be adopted by each board by January 1. So some commentary here, and this is some, this is information that I've shared with you. I've shared the draft policy with you for past several weeks, as well as this commentary. But for the public and transparency here, I wanted to be able to share what I've got here. So per legislation, all USDs must adopt non-resident enrollment policy by January 1. The attached draft that I've got here, it's also on the public side of board docs, is of the non-resident enrollment policy. And this is a first look. In order to proceed with the policy approval, the following must take place. Tonight, the board needs to set a date for a public hearing to allow patrons to testify for or against the policy. Prior to the hearing, we need to run a notice of hearing for two consecutive weeks in the Lawrence Journal World, which is our official paper. At the November meeting, it'll be my intention to seek final approval for the policy. Should any modification changes need to be made, we can always amend that policy or adjust the policy or update the policy in December. Beginning in the second semester, the district will begin the process of identifying enrollment caps. These caps must be approved in the April meeting for posting on our website in May. In June, family can begin the process of seeking non-resident enrollment through June 30, 2024. Between the dates of July 1 and 15 in 2024, the district will conduct a lottery for open seats that may have more enrollment requests than vacancies available. Students of teachers and military and students of the military are automatically granted enrollment and are not subject to the lottery. One important piece of the policy is we will ask the board to adopt is a section regarding a student in good standing. It's very important to note that a student in good standing for non-resident students must have the same description applied for our resident students. Factors we are looking at are long-term suspension and expulsion, short-term suspension and, excuse me, short-term suspension, in-school suspension, and truancy. This will be a very new experience for everyone. I'm, I'm just going to be honest. I'm concerned with the timeline that the legislation has created upfront. It's requiring us to accept out-of-district students long before our resident students have even begun the enrollment process. With that being said, we are on pace to have this implemented and ready for next summer. Again, tonight, a date needs to be set for the purpose of holding a public hearing for the non-resident enrollment policy, JBCC. Other than that, there will be no additional action asked of the board tonight. So again, what I've got for you is the draft. The policy itself is the policy recommended from KASB. The, towards the end, the final section that deals with the returning of, it's called non-resident student continued enrollment. That is the section that school districts have the ability to create the description of what is, what bar students need to hold before they come back for the following school year. It's important to note that when a student's coming to our school district, you know, it's, we want them to know that it's a privilege to be here. We've got a great district. We do some really good things. We want them to, to, to hold the value for our district that our families that live here do as well. And so we want to make sure that we have that expectation. So what we've done in terms of the student in good standing, the final paragraph section that's listed there with a series of bullet points are what our administrative team has poured over, looked over, and created what we'd like the board to accept as our definition. So a student meeting one or more of the following criteria shall be automatically deemed not a good standing and may not be denied or may be denied continued enrollment based solely thereon. The first is dealing with compulsory attendance, compulsory attendance laws, which by law state that a student that is unexcused for three consecutive days, five days in a semester, or seven days in a school year would be considered truant. That's the first exclusion item there. We would look at a student that, whose parent or person is acting as a parent did not or provided false or fraudulent information upon the application process. That was recommended by KASB. The student is termed to find out as not a resident of Kansas. This is where we begin the expulsion-suspension identification. A student is currently under a period of suspension or expulsion from any Kansas school district, and such suspension or expulsion will not expire until after the next school year has begun. The student has three or more in-school suspensions within the current school year. Wait a second, I missed something there. Has three or more in-school suspension for the current school year, including suspensions or manifestation hearing? The student has had two or more out-of-school suspensions for the current school year? Or there's a combination totaling three in-school or out-of-school suspensions within the current school year? So a student could have two in-school and one out-of-school.
Notwithstanding the manifestation.
Right, with 504, yes. Yes, if the manifestation notes that this is something that's related to a 504 or an IP. Yes, correct.
Then that would not count for it.
Correct. If the student has been given a long-term suspension or expulsion by the district within the current school year, or students who are suspended for acts considered to be violent or threats of violence may be denied continued enrollment after one such act determined by the superintendent. The final piece that we put in there is we will want to make sure that families are notified of that decision no later than May 31 of that school year. Those are the recommended additions to that particular policy.
When's the, what are the dates as far as when someone can apply to your district and when the decision has to go?
June 30th, or excuse me, June 1st through June 30th is when they can apply. And then the decision to, or the drawing, the lottery itself takes place between July 1 and July 15.
So how are we going to notify them no later than May 31?
Those are, that was for returning students. If you're, if you're, so through the lottery, you know, Joe is here during the school year, and then he's notified May 31 due to his, his, his either truancy or behaviors. He's not allowed back. He would be notified by the 31st.
So is there a same set of bullet points or requirements for someone who is applying? Is this what happened at their previous district?
Based on what we've got here, that's a great question. Based on what we've got here, the, the only exclusion there is if they are currently under, long-term suspension or expulsion.
Do we have the authority to add? You know, I have to, that was my question. Can you use the same criteria for somebody wanting to come into this?
At this point?
Do we have that power?
At this point, no.
Is there an, are there, are these type of questions in the application process?
There is an application, and I don't have that with me. We'll have that.
But with the priority, the way this is written, it seems like the ones we have to give the priority to, the military siblings, those kind of things, there's not the lottery. So it's basically if they're, if they're that, you know, they want to come here, they're automatically in.
So what we would typically do in the past is we could do essentially a check on, you know, their good standing in a previous district. At this point in time, we're not allowed. That doesn't, does not apply.
So it's only until they have that issue here?
Right.
Yeah.
So in terms of setting caps, won't be my issue. Sorry about it. But so setting caps has to happen before?
That'll happen, it has to be approved by the board in April.
What happens if you set a cap, and then for whatever reason you could be getting a lot of students that are resident students, and now you're over that cap? Do they start trying to like the last one called for from gone for the lottery? Or do you have to absorb them to actually remember?
Yeah, because, because the lottery happens before, you have to absorb them. So we would probably, what we probably wind up doing is that's what the three-year staffing plan that we've got, we'll probably be updating that.
To Phil's point, what about the reverse? What if we have a bunch transfer out we weren't expecting or longer numbers, and we all of a sudden, our cap space we have provided more ability, and we have the applicants?
So what, because that was something that's come up. So if you have, you do your lottery, and you've got your caps filled, and then you've got your move outs to your point. Beginning of school year, you've got, essentially, you're at your waiting list. School districts can call those families and, and let them know, hey, if you want in, you can. But it's that idea of if you do it for one, and you've got those openings, you got to do it for everyone. So if you, if you allow one in after the lottery, if, for the vacancy that's there, for all vacancies, you got to let the other vacancies come in as well.
If you have five spots, and you called one, you can't just call one personally.
Oh, right, right. If you have five spots, you got to allow five. But if you have five and 10 wanting in, you can still just take five, the first five that are next up on the list?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Well, it's all new, so.
Yes, this is, this is going to be a, again, I said, it's going to be a new experience for everyone.
And then we're not allowed to charge. I mean, there, there's no fee coming in because they're paying taxes where they live. But we're, we're going to get extra money from the states per headcount, but not very much.
We won't get them that, right now, based on the current funding mechanism, we won't get any money for them until the following school year.
Do you feel like that's something that's being addressed with this state? Well, as far as fixing that in the future?
There was an attempt to allow for current year enrollment. And in doing so, they would have allowed the current year enrollment or the preceding year enrollment. It was part of a mega bill got and go process that was done that got rejected because there were a handful of districts that would have lost significant amount of dollars because they are declining enrollment, and they need the second preceding year.
But I think it'd be prudent to ask for them to apply it to a smooth process that applies to this open enrollment, because you get a bunch of students and you don't have funding for your respective funding.
One of the, the funding mechanism challenges that's coming is the Gannon Court ruling that provided a, a set increase for the five consecutive years based on three-year average of the, lost the term. It's the cost of living adjustment possibly to, to impact. And so that's what allowed us to go from 4846 to 50,088. But this is the final year of that. So the legislature could do a variety of things. You know, special education funding is one that's being discussed. You know, general fund is one that's out there for student funding. It's, at this point in time, it's, anything could happen there. I saw a, an article that the attorney general is asking the courts to separate their jurisdiction over the Gannon ruling. So that too could have an impact.
Well.
Consumer pricing next, that's what it was. Yes.
So for today, we just need to set the date for that?
Yes.
Yeah.
And is it prior to our next November, oh, sorry, November 4th week, which is the 20th or something?
Nope, because we're out of school that week. It was moved.
Oh, okay.
To 13th.
Glad you guys mentioned that.
Will it be before the 13th?
It can be on or before the 13th, as long as we have two weeks to run the notice of hearing in the paper.
Can we do it on the 13th at 6 o'clock?
We could.
Just have the special meeting then, and then our regular meeting would begin at 6:30?
About 6:25.
Okay.
So 6:25?
No.
Second that motion. Okay, so 6 o'clock on the 13th?
On the 13th, not the 20th.
Do you need an addition?
No, and we're, all we needed to do tonight was set the date.
All right, so the date has been set. It will be published. We have the policy in front of us, and we will take care of the rest of it next month. Good. Okay, moving on, unless anyone has anything to add to that particular topic. It kind of overlaps with the RSP enrollment study update and three-year staffing plan later on. But before we get to that, new business. This has to do with board, board member compensation that was brought up last month. And that doesn't mean to compensate. It means to have something on the books officially, and that's in your packet there.
It's, it's within public content as well on board docs.
Doesn't change anything from our practice. It just puts something, now that it's been sort of changed and that door has been opened. Chris, I remember you mentioned wanting to have conversation because there, there were lots of different reasons that people brought that forward, and, and for different reasons to bring that forward. And so certainly want to open the floor to that discussion.
Yeah, and I'll reiterate, I'm not in favor of ever getting paid for this position. I just want to make sure that we have a discussion about it. And, and one thing from this phrasing here, I want to make sure, occasionally we travel as board members to go to Topeka for a training or something, and there's mileage reimbursement or hotels and that wouldn't be, that's not compensation. That's just, you know what I mean? Like, I don't want to get tied up in the, I had to cover a meal or something for my travels and whatever.
No, this, this is, is direct compensation for your work certain as the board.
So it would, it would exclude, or still allow for?
We would still pay registration for workshops and overnight stays for that, yeah.
This does have something on the books, because people are taking a look at that. And again, any board can always change any policy. That's their right to do that. But it hasn't ever been our tradition to have that here, and then it puts that in writing. And if someone wants to change it later on, then they certainly can. But it's better than not having a policy at all, since it's come up in discussion at larger levels of government. So that's why it's come before you.
I'm sorry, I support this 100% too. I do not think that we ever want or need to invest in compensating our school board. I guess it seems like it's very clearly stated, the Board of Education will not receive compensation for services as a board member. Period. What's the rest of that saying? Or what was the matter with the rest of that?
This was policy, because KASB does not have an active policy for this, we reached out to them to come up with the draft.
So, and still, you haven't, can you explain?
I don't love the way it's worded, but I think it's getting to what Chris is talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Reneweration for working duties performed.
I think that, I think it's saying, it's legally is preferred. Is the Board of Education will not receive compensation for services as a board member, notwithstanding that meaning because even though, even though there is a statutory authorization to receive payment.
And that's, that's what, okay. Now I see what you're getting at, Kelly. That's what, when we reached out to KASB, that was, that's what they said, if we did, if they did put a policy in there, they want to reflect that even though there is a statute that allows for it.
Okay.
Yes. Sorry, now I understand what your question is.
I'm also in Spanish.
So we need a motion.
I'm not going to initiate the motion because I initiated the movement, so I want to make sure.
Well, I will make a motion that we accept the board member compensation policy. Adopted 101623.
I'll second.
Kelly has moved, and Tony has seconded to approve BBE BG, board member compensation policy. All those in favor of approving the policy as presented, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0. And thank you, everyone, for your service. All right, moving on, board member input, interlocal report.
Also, in an effort to distribute our meetings beyond just the local office of the, of the, you know, board, we met last month, or well, earlier this month. We met, when was that? We think that was.
It does like longer.
That makes me feel better.
It does seem like longer. We met in Udora. We met at the, the, a school district office in Udora, which was delightful, a very comfortable space. Not, not as luxurious as this. But it was, it was a lovely meeting. Nothing of great note happened that I can recall to report. Do you have something about you have something?
No, I'm over looking at the agenda thinking that there's not much there.
Right. It was just in a different location. So we all traveled to Udora, and we all met there, and it was, and it was rather nice. Next month, I think our plans are to meet in Wellsville. Is that correct?
I don't know.
Is it? Okay. Well, there are plans in the future to meet in Wellsville. Yeah, no idea.
I was virtual again. I just have a memory gap when I go virtual meetings.
It wasn't, it wasn't a memorable meeting, except for the fact that it was in a different location.
That's a good.
I mean, that's, that's the report. Everything else was pretty performant.
Yeah. I do have one other update, not from the meeting necessarily, but I, Dan Ray and I are presenting at the KASB conference about our five-year strategic plan that we developed for the interlocal two years ago. And so we have a, you know, four or five minute session to kind of give our spiel about how this kind of transformed our conversations at the interlocal level. So, so when we have our November 13th meeting, if you guys wanted an update on how that conversation will be.
Please do. And how, how, the presentation, I'm just curious, were you selected? Did you have to like sign up?
Yeah, we.
Draw the short stick? What happened?
All the above.
Okay.
A five-year strategic plan is a kind of a rare thing for, especially interlocal, like, because we never had one as our own group. And, and so when KASB became aware of that, we had a lot of discussions about that. And then we ended up applying for participation in that, and they, and we were.
That's great.
Yeah, I was finding the slides out today.
That's awesome.
Got to submit them out Friday.
Thank you for doing that. All right, anyone have anything for miscellaneous? Superintendent's report.
All right, so I was, I was asked a couple weeks ago, and I'm drawing a blank on which individual asked me. But the enrollment study that is set for November?
That was me.
That was you? Okay.
Even though it's not going to be like my problem, I'm worried about this, this establishing of caps situation, and I felt like circling back to the enrollment study might be helpful.
Per, okay. So we are on pace. What, the last bit of information that they were seeking was our September 20 enrollment data. And Kay got that to them, so they confirmed with me that they are on pace, ready to roll. So it's, we're, we're good there. The other thing that I wanted to do is bring to light the three-year staffing plan that we approved last, we amended it again on August 4th as we were adjusting to enrollment. And so now that we're into the throes of this school year, it's time to start looking ahead to next school year. And so what we've got here is the 24, 25 school year. Those positions there, you'll, you'll notice that we put the last time, we didn't rank those. Those are simply just there. We will begin with our operations crew this coming month, starting to look at this, this list of staff. Building principals will also take, take the ideas and go back to their building leadership teams for staff input there. Some things that are of important to note. We have got, let's see, one, two, three, four, five ESAR-related positions that are there. The, the positions that are listed there is, we got the, one is social work. We've got student success at the intermediate and primary center. We've got student success at the high school. The ELA intervention teacher is also the, the student success position for the junior high. Those, those are four positions there. So, or those are the five positions of note there. In visiting with Mr. Olert, I asked him to take into account those ESAR positions, those five positions total there, in addition to the different portions of salaries related, connected with our health staff we put in there between connected with our health staff, we put in there between... In terms of the at-risk funding that we've been able to identify. It's important to note with the at-risk, that's based off free and reduced mail applications, your free applications actually. Charlie did a fantastic job with that. Last year, our free and reduced application percentage was around 24% through some hard work and working with families and, and attention to it. Our free and reduced application, our free and reduced percentage is close, more close to what I believe our community is, where she's got us at 34%, 32%, excuse me, 32%. So it's, with that, there's some, some additional at-risk dollars that will help offset some of that cost as we're moving forward. Nate, did you have any thoughts or comments?
Yeah, so I wanted to mention that there's actually six ESAR positions.
Okay.
The total amount overall is the same, but we have the student success teachers, which we have three of those, we have a core four, which is basically a student success teacher, one in each building, we have a, two health aides that qualified under the ESAR. We do along, as Mark mentioned, that we do have that KDHE grant that we're paying some majority, the other nursing staff from, that will expire this year, so, sorry, I didn't want to...
Nope, and to that point, with the KDHE grant, that's about $109,000 that the district has been utilizing to benefit our health services. So there's, right off, right off the top, we've got some, some maintenance of, usually you use the term maintenance of efforts or special education, well, this is some maintenance of effort for gen ed that, it's at the forefront of our discussions. So, as you heard Kay's work, there's a lot of work that goes in with, with our technology department and the safety and security work that goes there. If you were to break down the teacher-to-student ratio for a teacher, and compare it to the teacher-to-IT ratio, it's, it's 1 to 700 or something, something to that. So they do a lot of good work, but there's also some need as our district continues to grow. This year, as I mentioned, we are up 35 students this year, we went up 41 students last year. So over a two-year process, we've gained 71 new heads within our, within our district. So, there are some, there's some new, as Mr. Bredingham has pointed out within some communication with some reports, the graduation requirements for this year's eighth graders, by the time they're seniors, will have some adjustments and changes necessary, and so what he's got, when he talks about an ELA teacher at the high school, it's because of the new opportunity to have a communicate, a .5 communication credit in addition to 3.5 ELA credits, why he's got that listed there. The work that Ashley does within the curriculum instruction and assessment realm, she and Drew have become quite the dynamic duo, but there's, she's got a vision, a dream of utilizing instructional coach at some point, and so it's entering the conversation at 24-25 with the idea of, we want to be, we want to be actionable with the data that we're collecting as we're going through the MTSS plus process with Amy Delarosa, to make sure we're asking the right questions of our students and our, with, based on what they're demonstrating with what they know, and then what we're doing with instruction to make sure we're responding in the adequate ways. There's some work there that could be beneficial with an instructional coach, so that, she's got some visions there within the, the district realm of CIA, so. So we'll begin that process and start working towards getting something to you. When we talked about doing this last year, the initial goal was to have this as a rough draft for you in December, and then get, get that approved in, in January, I think we had the actual final approval in February last year, based on some, some things that took place. This year, I'd like to get it back on, on the forefront early on, particularly because we've got, we've got to look at what we're doing with those ESAR-funded positions and begin the conversations with our buildings immediately to see how we can proceed and move forward. Unfortunately, the way school finance works, you don't know what you're going to be working with until the legislature convenes at the end of April, so that's, that's going to, that's why we want to be on the front end of this. So, no action, this is just merely report and FYI, but...
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Nope, go ahead.
And maybe I'm just not seeing it, I was about to say it happens. The new financial literacy class that is now required by the state, do we, is that another position ad?
Brant, are you...
Because I don't see that here, and...
Yeah, can you come over here and, and talk about this? I met with, with Brant.
Because I've seen that in some of the reports, but I just want to connect that.
I met with Brant, Kelly, let's see, Reggie, and Autumn last week, and we went through the, a first look at the graduation requirements as a team there, and began some discussions about how that impacts like math and business pathway pieces, because one of the things to note is that financial literacy piece, if it's embedded within a business pathway, because it's now a graduation requirement, it can't be within that pathway.
Right, that's, that requires very...
That's really probably one of the biggest pieces with that, because it's a graduation requirement, right now, obviously, we can embed that into like a business finance pathway and kind of kill two birds with one stone. The issue now would be, you know, for instance, Bronte Bateman at the high school is responsible for teaching that consumer and personal finance, which will then become the financial literacy piece. I would say most semesters anywhere from two to four sections, so now you have a teacher that's responsible for a pathway, and now we have this graduation requirement, and so we've been working to address that, we're going to have to be creative. Quite frankly, what it will probably mean is her and Tyler Wolf are responsible for three pathways, and so that'll probably become one and one, but I, in the end, I think it'll be better, because there's a whole plan that will be laid out, and we'll explain that in December, so.
So one of the things that Brant and I have been talking about, and he and Kelly have been working with the CTE team, is that five-year vision of our CTE pathways that we have. It includes, you've got some nesting where you can be teaching classes at the same time, but it also includes what the term I use, the cohorting law, and I'm going to use our ag education program right now, ag sciences program, one year the focus is animal science, the next year the focus could be plant science, and so a four-year high school career, a student could go through both pathways, but you're not feeling the pressure to teach all of it the same year. So it's, the idea of when you face that in, you need to have that graduation requirement in place by the time this year's eighth graders are graduating in 2028. So, the financial literacy piece, maybe adding a math teacher, not this coming school year, but maybe the coming subsequent school year, but those are some things that we'll have to add, based on, you know, based on how enrollment works, if we have any students come in, you know, it's a real possibility that our students exit as well. So, there's a lot of variables that are at play. And so the three-year, or the enrollment study that we're doing this year gives us a baseline, in a couple of years, we're going to need to go through that all over again, because that's also going to impact staffing decisions.
Yeah.
And the piece that would go along with that, that I really, that would be more for Nathan and Mr. Dodge, would be, it is a technical level course, so you are getting the additional funding for every student that's enrolled currently in consumer and personal finance, and of course that will go away. So I don't know what chunk that really amounts to right now.
Oh yeah, that's a good point.
But if it's a graduation requirement, at least, you know...
My kids are probably going, well, I would, it looks 80 to 100, maybe, I could be wrong, but...
The, the effort to move our introductory courses to the best of our ability to the eighth grade level for our pathways will help us, it's a strategic financial effort, so that when they're taking those application and, what's the third here, I've drawn a blank?
Technical.
Technical. When they take those application and technical level courses, they're getting reimbursement at the .48 seat hour for the students that are involved. That can help us set the cost of staffing and materials.
I have another question, I don't want to cut that conversation.
No, go ahead.
So, and you might have spoke to it already, and I know you just commented on the funding not being known until April 18th. What, how would this 24-25 staffing three, no, plan be funded?
That's where, we're, that's what, that's why we're doing this right now, we're trying to see, one of the efforts that we talked about is leveraging our at-risk funds for our, we were able to figure out how to get social work into that, so at-risk is one, one mechanism that we can, we can leverage to utilize that, so.
And, not that I need this now, have you put dollar figures to all these positions?
No, we haven't, because we've not prioritized them, and we're, I'm not, I'm not at a point to, to be in that, because right now, as I stated, the real priority that I'm hearing from our building principals are the ESAR-related positions, and that, that's, those are the numbers that I do have, right there, so I've not, one of the things with this plan, you're never looking to approve every position listed here, you're looking at, all right, what are we going to prioritize, and then from there, you move. That's why there's always a third year added each consecutive year.
It kind of rolls.
Yes. At some point, I'll take what's up at the top, which is this current school year, and I'll move it down to a bottom where there's a line break on the document, so that you only have three, three years that are active. All right.
Board's facility tour.
Yes, so what, I'm going to, in your, in your packet, you've got the facility tour timeline. What we've, how we've got it set up is, our special meeting will occur at 3:30 at the end of the day, that's an opportunity to debrief. I've broken the, the board into three teams, we've got Group A, which is Kelly Bethel Smith, Andy Parks, and Tony Brown, Group B is Phil Harvey and Chris Perry, Group C is Kelly Newfeld and Susan Schefelbein. The idea is to take our current, it was our current bond subcommittee, and spread them out with, with the rest of the board as you're going through and seeing and hearing what, those, those items and how it overlays or intersects with some of the subcommittee conversation that's there. So how we'll do this is, we want you to experience some of the life of the kids, so we'll have breakfast for you over at the PC, IC, and junior high, based on where you're assigned to start. So Group A, you'll start, so Team Kelly will start over at the, the primary center, Phil's group will start over at the IC, and Team Kelly also will start over at the junior high. They'll have breakfast for you, so you'll have what they're having there. Then you'll go on a 30-minute tour of each of those facilities, building principals will take you through those highlights, some of the things that you'll see are some recommendations that come down from, have come down from Mike Elliott, who's, who's had a planned vacation this week, as you move through that. Then we've got a break for you to travel to your next spot, so you'll, you'll move along there. So whoever was at the PC will move on to the IC, whoever was at the IC goes to the junior high, whoever was at the junior high moves on to the high school. And from there, you'll get another, another tour. Then we'll have, put another break in, and I've extended that second break a little bit, so it gives you time to check emails if you have to, use the restroom, grab a snack, or whatever you need to do, and then you'll start up again. You have your 30-minute tour and travel to spot four, where you'll have your final tour at that particular point. After your final tour, we've got an hour, we want you to be able to have lunch at the school where the kids are having, so you can kind of see how all that goes, see the work that Charlie and her crew have put together at each of those locations. From 12:30 to 2:30, I've got, I've worked with the building principals who have worked with their teams to have opportunities for you to, to observe what's going on within their, within those buildings, and they have talked to teachers, and so we've got some that are like, yeah, I want them to come in, and so they've got scheduled times for others, it's, here's what their schedule is, drop in. So what I, what I want to do is to make sure that we are, we don't have more than two at each particular spot for that hour, so that we're, we're still within the open meetings side of things. I need some, I need, what I want to do is have you choose to observe at two different buildings, all right? So I need two people to volunteer to, to observe at the PC from 12:30 to 1:30.
Oh, does it need to be teams?
No, it doesn't need to be the same team, at this point, you can, yep.
So I'm not on the C team anymore?
You are not on C team. Yes, you got, all right. All right, who would like to observe at the PC from 1:30 to 2:30? You did the PC at 12:30. I'll give you, I'll give you a schedule with that to help you out.
I'll do whatever's next.
All right, so Kelly, who also wants to be at the... Andy, okay.
And that's still at the PC?
That's still at the PC.
But you're going to send it to us, it's fine.
Yep, yep, before you walk out tonight, you'll have it.
Okay.
All right, from 12:30 to 1:30, who would like to see the IC? So, before the...
I mean, are we all going to see all of it?
What's that? No, you're going to be able to see...
You're going to see two.
Yeah. Okay, you want to go to the IC, I'm going to put you there at 1:30 since you're at 12:30.
Yeah, we probably need to pair up.
I'll go to the IC too.
We don't have any travel time here, so...
Well, your travel time is worked, your travel time will be worked into that hour.
Okay, all right, got it.
So you want to go to the IC with...
Yeah, but I also want to go to the high school and junior high.
All right, so...
Can I just go for 15 minutes and run to the next one?
The reason I don't want to do that is I don't want to get an accidental four person. So, you want to be at junior high or the high school?
I don't care. I want to be at all, so.
All right. All right, so Susan, I'll have you at the junior high. All right, so who doesn't have a 12:30? Chris, where do you want to be, the IC, junior high, or the high school? High school. All right.
I'd like to do the high school as well.
All right. Let's see, yes, there is. All right, so Phil, you've already got two, so you're out. Susan, you've got two, you're out. So Kelly, where do you want to go for your second?
Um, is the IC still open?
The IC is still open. Okay. Phil, Susan, Kelly, Andy, where would you like to go at?
Junior high or high school?
All right, I'll put you at the junior high. All right. Tony, you at the high school at 1:30? All right. Yeah, junior high. No, junior high is already booked at 1:30. You've got three, I got three, I can get you there, you can get there. All right, so does everybody have two spots?
Let's see, I'm at high school at 12:30, and...
You need a 1:30?
Yeah.
All right, 1:30, you can go to the IC. All right, I'll get you your schedules before you leave. All right.
So then at 3:30, then we'll have a special meeting.
Then 3:30, we'll meet, special meeting over at the high school will be in their, their newly transformed library, for that, that final, that final piece there to debrief.
Great. The bay.
The bay.
The pit.
The pit. All right.
Okay, and last one, you've touched upon some already, so we don't need to be labor.
Right.
Seen some things about enrollment being down, it's not, 71 over the last two years.
Correct.
30, sorry, it was 34 this year, is that right?
It was 35 up this year.
35.
41 last year.
Yes, so a couple of those pieces of information, just so everybody's working with all the same stuff. What else came?
Well, food and nutrition, I want to...
Food and nutrition, yeah.
That's a, that's one, because it's, you do get reimbursements for students, the free and reduced, there's also reimbursements that are there as well for full meals that are, have all three components to it. You've got student fee, or student pays, the paid students that, that also subsidize that. What's, what's important to note there is, because that's a self-sufficient program itself, it doesn't, doesn't access any of our general, general fund dollars to operate. itself, it doesn't, doesn't access any of our general, general fund dollars to operate. It's, it's, it's one that you can, when you budget for it, you want to budget, budget for the ability to have the authority to spend. One of the things that we wanted to do is invest in that food and nutrition program because we've also had more than a three-month surplus within those as a result of free meals to all students as part of the COVID relief that came from the federal government. We still need to pay those down. One of the things that, so to do that, one of the things that Charlie needed to do to make some, some upgrades is we needed to fully staff our kitchens. There was, we, we, we needed more staff to just work in those kitchens. We're putting more food out for students than we had been, so they have more options. The cost of food has gone up itself. And so that gives us the ability, the authority to spend to be able to make those, those changes. And I will tell you, the goal, the charge that that team has had, I was very happy with what we've got. So I asked, I asked for a comparison. When we looked at food and nutrition last spring, you'll recall, our percentage participation was 42% from August to December. From August to October this year, she's at 47%. So it's gone up five percentage points. Kudos to Charlie and her team with all the work they're doing. The, I'm, I'm excited for what you'll see when you see their, like, you have a chance to eat at the high school. You'll get to see the, the fully stocked vegetable bar. She's making some really good changes that are helping students feel full. I know from my own experience, my, my daughter's coming home and she's not raiding the pantry after school. So I always take that as a good thing. Another.
Thank you, because I think that's a confusing area to talk about, quickly explain, because it does represent an increase in the overall budget, but you have to represent that according to proper accounting. That was feedback we got in our annual review. And most school districts had to deal with that issue because of the food, the changing and how that was structured during COVID. But the addition of the staff members to be able to do the improved things that we were trying to do in terms of quality and delivery, and the delivery component is, is important. They don't have three hours to serve. It has to be efficient, and that has some logistical things. So those things do genuinely reflect an increase even with the parts that are, in fact, truly reimbursable. So it can become a little nuanced unless you're differentiating there, so thank you for clarifying.
You bet. I know that there was questions regarding Peaslee Tech. I want to point out that we have worked with Peaslee Tech. We have for some time. The issue is, we don't have a lot of students that are interested right now. We do have two students that are going there doing automotive and HVAC. The Peaslee Tech is a fantastic organization. I've known about Peaslee Tech dating back to my days at Green Bush. They've got some amazing programs there. They're, they're a, a great resource, but we only have two students right now that, that are taking classes there. Last year, we had a handful, I think it was around six. So we, we do have that. Some, another option that we also have for students in addition to Peaslee is where we've got a student going to Neosho County Community College for the welding program. They have the ability down there to do the certification or CTE certification tests at, at Neosho. So we've got a student going there. We've got 31 kids right now taking courses either at, from Johnson County Community College or Neosho County Community College. And I'll talk about this here in a, in a second. We've, we've got as a, as a district, when we identified as part of our, our accreditation process, the next round of goals, we wanted to make sure that by 2027, that we have 90% of our, our graduates have either six college credits or a CTE certification. And so I can tell you that Brandt and Kelly and Reggie and Autumn are working really hard trying to work with students and identifying, not every, not every child is, is destined or wants to go to college. So the CTE programming to get those certifications is important. And so part of our work this year with that vision is where are those certifications lie? Where do those student interests, where, where are they founded? And that dates back to last December when we did that, that polling of our students, where their CTE interests were. So there, there's work that's to be, to be, to be done in that area, but I just wanted to point out, we do have, we are aware of Peaslee Tech. We do have students going there, but we also have students going to Neosho and Johnson County, or getting, getting work, or studies through Johnson County and Neosho. Let's see. Review of the strategic plan. Wanted to bring that up just for, for clarity. Having worked with Green Bush and having been a part of strategic plan development in a few other districts as part of it, it is not in the world of education designed to be a list of goals, but rather themes that are elicited from the community, from stakeholders, from students and staff. And from those themes, you get those action items of things to complete, and you have that date of when we want those things completed. And so we reviewed that as a board, as part of the KISA review that I did with you back in June. And from that, we, I also stated that these are not one-off items. These are best practices that we've got in place. And from that, what I reviewed with you, we had 16 out of 37 of those action items started and in place. And our one-offs, they're not checklists, they were done. They're items that we're putting in place to grow upon each year after year. That's 43% of, of what we've set out to do by 2026. This year, we've got 10 of those action items on our, our task, and one being tomorrow's facility tour. And the idea behind that is that that's not a one-off. It's something that, as we get the need to, to see what's going on, how we're growing, where the deferred maintenance items need to become priorities, that tour is going to be essential.
Just, I think it's important that people understand, might disagree how the measurement is taken, but you, you should never put any plan together without a means for measuring your progress, and there is one. The report that was given in June on our update, am I, is this a fever dream? Am I remembering this wrong? Again, entirely possible. I thought there were green lights and red, I mean, there, it was.
We've, we've got it set up.
There was a system that monitors the actual progress of, not that anything is ever actually, but explained.
It's, it's in board docs, and it was, it was shared that, that has that, the grid. But once we have those items in place and it's an act of practice, it was highlighted yellow.
That's what, okay.
Yes. And if, if we needed to change the, the date for, the target date for implementation, we amended that with red font. And so there were a couple of things that we needed to move, move back a year. There were something, there was a couple items off the top of my head, I can't remember which one it was. We moved up a year as we, as we just got, got the effort into it. So, yes.
June feels like a long time ago, but just, just so that people are aware, that the plan, whether people agree with the plan or not, or whether they agree about the, the form of evaluation or measurement, that's certainly understandable and up for anyone to discuss. But, but to suggest it's not happening at all would just not be a reflection of the facts.
And it's, the strategic plan, and having, again, having worked with Green Bush, it's not been intended to be a series of goals. Four disciplines of execution, you know, Stephen Covey, if you heard his Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, his son Sean Covey is, is well-regarded in, in the business world in terms of leadership and, and motivation. The Four Disciplines of Execution, it, it talks about it where if you set 11 to 20 goals based on the whirlwind that is your day, the 80% of your time that's spent, when you get down to it at the end of your measurement period, 11 to 20 goals, you'll get zero accomplished. If you set goals, four to 10 goals within that time period, you're, you're best to get one or two accomplished by the time you're done measuring. If you drop that goals to three to four, you're able to, you'll, you'll get two, or excuse me, two to three, you'll get two to three done. And the, the idea behind it is you're focused on those wildly important goals. And that, that's one of the reasons why with the strategic plan, when you've got those series of action items, you want to create 37 goals. What you want to do is you, you've got these, there's, these are these practices, best practices, we're going to get them in place, we're going to move forward with that. That steps into the act that, the, our goals, what we do have as a district. But I talked to you in June when I did our KISA report, I shared with you the three goals that we have. So again, leveraging the Four Disciplines of Execution, the, the process that we go through with our accreditation, we select two to three goals and that help us drive what we're doing to make sure we know we're heading in the right direction. And with that, they are written on the SMART format. And we've got those three goals that I shared with the board as part of that, part of that report to you. Our first goal is to ensure that 80% of our students score a two and above on the Kansas State Assessment, or a 23 or higher on the ACT. It's, again, it's important to note that the State Department, that, that provided the definitions for the rating scale, identified a two as the basic skills necessary to be college and career-ready. Legislation has identified threes and fours. All right? It's important to know, the ones that developed the process of identifying the educational needs identified a two as basic skills necessary to be successful. So as far as, as part of this process, that's what we're looking at. We shared that with staff at Convocation in August, and it was also shared with everybody as part of the budget development process. We developed our budget with those goals in mind. The second goal we have is that we were, we, we want 90% of our students to score low risk on our socio-emotional screeners. We recognize that our socio-emotional screener is, is intended to help us understand when a student needs some, some assistance. We get that. But we want that culture to be one where every student feels safe and welcome and is, is able to, to, to just be themselves. And so that, that's what that goal is representing. And then the third one, again, I talked about earlier, it's that 90% of our students graduate with six credits or a CTE certification. All of those occur by the 27 school year. So those do fit the SMART format. Those goals, we've, we've also, we've got a, as part of this KISA process, the accreditation process, we've got Dr. Hanson, who serves as, what I prefer to her as our accreditation coach, that's working with us through this process. So it's, the idea about it, behind it is, we recognize there are areas that we need to do better to get that information out. I will be the first to own that and to get that onto our website, need to be able to communicate that more to our, our community and our staff as well, continue to have that conversation. They know what we're working on right now. Our buildings are creating goals within their buildings that align to those district goals. They don't have to match them, but what they do will work toward, help feed into those.
I just think, you know, the, the two and the three thing, I mean, listen, if I'm being asked, if I'm asked to rank something one to four, and four is best, just from my conditioned mind of thinking A and B, and it's like letter grades, if I see a two and I don't understand how that's been defined, I, I would understand how that would be seen as bad or not good enough. And it does, and, and here's the reality, we should always strive to improve. We want more twos to be threes, and more threes to be fours, certainly. But two different entities define two, the value of two as being different. One, I believe all of our students are far more than the value of a number 1, 2, 3, 4 on any test. But that is one of the measurement tools that we have, so we have to use it and we have to be accountable for it. But I just think it's really important to delineate between how the, how the Department of Education and the legislative body, in terms of the working definitions, those numbers mean really some different things in different contexts and can, you know, be very scary. Doesn't mean we don't want to build on it and be better, but it also means that it is not as dire as it appears, if that's the information or the lens with which you're viewing. It doesn't mean it's irrelevant for a larger conversation, for sure. But it doesn't reflect the reality of the work of our teachers and students.
And I don't want to, I don't want to pass off the impression that we're only trying to work towards twos.
Absolutely.
We're, we're trying to move our ones to twos, or twos to threes, or threes to fours.
Always.
I think it's implied, so it's really, even though it's four numbers, it's, it's a binary measure. Are you ready for college or not ready for college? If you're ready for college, are you super, super ready?
Yes.
You know, are you, are you just minimal ready?
Yeah.
And that's, and so it's like, there's one, and then there's two, three, four.
And, and here's what I'll tell you, and, and it's, it's one of those things, if you, if you talk to teachers, they'll tell you this. Standardized tests given once a year for students where the test does not impact their grade, it does not impact their, their, you know, permission to graduate.
Right.
There's, there are some that don't take it seriously. There, there are, there are some that don't. There are some that do, and they, they, that's just, that's how they're wired, and that's how they, they, so I'm not trying to discredit that. But it's, it's also one assessment, which is why we have goals in the socio-emotional domain. This is why we also have goals in the, the post-secondary readiness phase of, of the college credits and the CTE certifications. It's, we're, we're trying to triangulate data there.
Even that, even that, that has more weight for like, does bear a little bit.
And I've, I've got some more assessment piece here towards the end that I'll, I'll share.
I want to, I just want to appreciate for a minute the fact that you talked about narrowing down, narrowing the goals, because not only this guy here, but a lot of educational researchers would say, we don't want to have a huge number of goals that we're striving to. And Jay Westover, I know you've read his book.
Yes, I know Jay.
I've read his book. And, and he would say, you know, have this, this clarity of district goals and then school priorities. So you would align what they're doing to the, schools would also have the goals that align with the district goals, but to have an exorbitant number of goals is, there's no focus.
Right.
Clarity with that.
Absolutely. There, there was a bus purchase that, back in July 17, it came to the board. The, the idea behind it was the bus was, was approved, and no one really knows, knows why the, it was chosen, in terms of the one that was chosen, the one that was $129,000. It was spoken to in great detail. Nate was up here in front, and he was explaining that we went with that one because it was the one that was within the same brand as our current fleet. And when you do that, it's, we're able to keep parts in stock, we're able to, to utilize our current fleet when we need to do repairs. It, it came from feedback with our transportation department, so Leanne and Al weighed in on, on some feedback there. It also, it had the requirements, the options that we set up for the specs on the bid, which the video optimization that's, that's necessary on the cameras was, was one of them. So it, it is there. If, for those that are, are wondering, it is, it's on our YouTube recording of that board meeting on July 17. There was explanation of the budget, did not include rationale as to why we, what we did with the, the increased funds. When we did our budget hearing, there was a slide that listed how and why we leveraged, or we were planning to utilize the 1.5 million that had occurred. That's, that's on the September 14 board meeting, special meeting, it's there. It was discussed in great details within, within the board docs presentation that's listed, as are all of the documents from that, that budget hearing. Statements about lower enrollment. While over a 10-year period, the enrollment had, was down, we are turning the trajectory on that. The last two school years, we've, we've grown by 76 students as part of our, as part of our enrollment process. This particular school year, we added 35 new students. Last year, we added 41 new students. 76 new students are walking, have, have enrolled over the last two years. We don't get funding for the 35 students that entered our schools this year. So we still have to, to fund them. If we were getting funding at the 5,088 state level, you, you factor that to, if they were, if those qualify as, as full-time FTEs, and as such, you're looking at around $178,000 that we have to, to utilize as the cost that's, that we're not getting because we don't get to, to claim them as part of our, our budget process. So we, we do have to, to work that, consider that. KSB policies, you know, it's, we get those in June, we shared them with the board in June, and then we did the approval in July. I will look back, I look back today on that. One of the things that we try to do as we provide information to the board is after the board meetings, move those documents to public. And I will, I will claim, I will take ownership of, those, those documents in June did not get moved to the public side of things. But the suggestion of moving that to public content, I think is a fantastic one. But the suggestion of moving that to public content, I think is a fantastic one. I think it's one moving forward that needs to happen, and as we get our next round that'll come in December, and with the transition of the new board in January, I think that's a great opportunity to start that practice. Board Docs is an amazing tool and resource, and I've been trying to learn and grow with it, getting more information, more items there, and leveraging the ability to put those documents public. And I think making that happen, it's something that is a smart decision and needs to be done.
And I think it's a good idea to, even though there's nothing that forbids us from adopting a policy, I mean, I could make up a policy right now, if we wanted to vote on it, we could. That would be a terrible board practice, but continuing the practice of always presenting, make sure stuff gets uploaded later, that's great. But we don't vote on policies the first time we see them. You see them, you review them, you think about them, and you don't vote them on until the next time around. So I think that's a good, it's a good practice.
The last piece is just trying to, trying to look at graduation rates and then get data that's compared to state assessment rates. If that's the grade card that we're going to use, let's talk about that. When you look at 2022, it was an 86% graduation year. And looking at the cohort over a four-year period, there were 14 students that left our schools and did not count towards that graduation rate. And we know, we know one is that counts towards, as a non-graduate, because the student left the country for a year and came back. Well, when they came back, they were classified as a junior.
Right.
So guess what? They don't, they don't graduate within their cohort, so they count against. And then for whatever life changes or life reasons, there were a number of students that just decided not to be in school anymore. So there were some dropouts that were there. And then there were some that just, that didn't get the courses done in order to graduate on time. I will say, the elephant in the room is, okay, how does that impact them? Those students had their eighth and ninth grade school years impacted by COVID. And so that's, that's one year we talked about how it was, the struggle was real for everyone. I will tell you that that impact was not just felt here, that impact was felt everywhere. That's why the SRF funds were there, trying to offset the impact COVID had for, whether it was socio-emotional or academic. So when you compare '22, the '22 school year, to the 86% graduation rate, and you look at the twos and above, which I've already explained to you as the basic and above, those 10th, those were 10th graders, those weren't graduates that were tested. So you can't compare that graduation rate to the state assessment rate. But let's, for the sake of the conversation, those scores there for two and above were 76% in ELA, 62% in math, and 72% in science. Threes and fours were 27% in ELA, 19 in math, and 36 in science. You know, they're, COVID impacted that particular group as 10th graders. Think about it, the eighth grade year, the pre-algebra year, and then the algebra year was interrupted. So now they're asked to be assessed on their sophomore year. It's, call it excuse-making, call it a spade a spade, is what it is. So when you look at this year's graduates, the 23 graduates, we have a 93% graduation rate. Twos and above with 75 ELA, 57 in math, and 75% in science. For threes and fours, 28%, again, again, this was last year's 10th graders, 28% ELA for threes and fours, 17 were math, 42% for science. One thing that I also think is important to know, both in '22 and '23, our state assessment scores across the board far exceeded the state assessment average. So when you look at, when you look at that comparison as a district, let's look at all of our students, all right? In '23, 78% ELA were two and above compared to 67% across the state. For math, 76% in our district were three, two and above compared to 76% across the state. And science, 71% compared to 60%. If you want to just look at threes and fours, for ELA, we had 39 compared to 33%, 36 in math to 31%, and 38% in science to 31% in state. That's compared all of our students to the state. We exceeded the state average. I'm not satisfied with that, but that's, to sit here and say that we're failing, I can't accept that. The, so let's get to the graduation rate that was posed for '22, the fall, spring of '22, where it was 86% graduation rate. The last time those students took a state assessment would have been their eighth grade year. 80% of those students scored a two and above on ELA, 73% scored a two and above in math, 64% scored a two and above in science. For three and fours, in ELA, it was 25%, 39% for math, and 30% for science, again, exceeding the state average. The last time they took that state assessment. So when we're looking at the comparison here, let's throw another figure in there, it's the ACT. Since 2016, Baldwin students have exceeded the state average on the ACT. In '22, the '22 ACT, Baldwin students averaged 21.8 compared to the state average of 19.8. I don't accept that our students are failing. Do we have room to grow? Yes, absolutely. And our teachers recognize it and know it. And I can't, I can't stand by and accept that statement that our teachers are failing, because they're not, and our students aren't failing. They're working incredibly hard, despite some of the challenges that were forced upon them, not by their own doing, and they're doing incredibly well. We'll continue to grow our goals that are there by '27. We're going to continue to work towards those, and as we go, as we start tracking things and reflecting it in the spring of every year, if we see something that's not heading in the direction we want, we'll pivot, we'll make an adjustment, and we'll respond. So that is what I got there.
Thank you. We still want to improve, whether you want to call them SMART goals or District School Improvement Goals in our packet. Again, to read or write, 90% low risk on my savers by 2027. 80% of students score two or higher on the Kansas Assessments or 23 or higher on the ACT by 2027. 90% of USC 348 students will graduate with a CTE certificate or six college credits. Thank you for everyone for the work on the part of students and teachers and staff. You're all a part of the progress that's been made and the progress that will continue. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Bland and Mr. Dodge to discuss personnel pursuant to the justification under coma for non-elected personnel matters. And the open meeting will resume, resume, excuse me, back in the library at 9:17.
Chris, go.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand. Motion carries. Kelly, are you voting for it? Okay, thank you. Seven, zero.
I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dodge. Is Kelly here?
Kelly's not here, but Grant is.
Okay, Mr. Dodge and Mr. Breedingham.
Gary.
And Gary Stavounas pursuant to personnel matter at Baldwin High School. Excuse me, regarding a personnel matter at Baldwin High School pursuing, pursuant, gosh, I can't talk. Pursuant to the justification for coma for non-elected personnel. And the open meeting will resume at, how long? Well, 9:30, is that too long?
How much does that mean?
It's 9:16.
Yes, that's plenty.
Okay, 9:30.
Second?
All those in favor, please say aye, raise your hand. Motion carries 7-0. It's 9:34. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Breedingham and Mr. Dodge to discuss a confidential student matter. Pursuant to the exception under coma relating to actions adversely or favorably affecting a student. And the open meeting will resume at, how much time would you like? Okay, let's say 9:40. All those in favor? Aye, motion carries 7-0.
Megan, just so it doesn't always have to be Kelly, is it sufficient in your mind if I say we are going to be exec for the same conditions for another five minutes?
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Wait, what time are you coming back? Five? Got it.
All right, so all we have remaining is to approve various personnel reports.
I make a motion, we approve the personnel report as presented.
Let's say reports plural.
Reports plural.
Yep, and that'll get it. All those in favor of approving the personnel reports as presented, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And? All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye, meeting adjourned, nine fifty six.
Yes, I've got your...
Oh, yeah.